Good evening, welcome to the March 2nd, 2011, meeting of the Murvisburg Planning Commission. We have a quorum present, so I'll call the meeting to order. The first item on tonight's agenda is to approve the minutes of the January 19th, 2011, and the February 2nd, 2011, Planning Commission meetings. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, I'll declare them approved as submitted. The first portion of our agenda tonight pertains to public hearings. We have two public hearings scheduled, the first of which is a zoning change request to rezone approximately 0.80 acres from RS-10 to RM-12 located along Bradyville Pike and Carolyn Court, Greenhouse Ministries, this applicant. Good evening, Ms. Ely, how are you?
Thank you, I'm doing well. Good evening, Planning Commission members and Chairman Lamb. The first public hearing this evening is a public hearing to consider rezoning property that's located on the eastern side of Bradyville Pike and along the south side of Carolyn Court. If you refer to the maps that were included in your packets and the one that's on the screen, it's the area that's shaded orange. The property is approximately .8 acres and currently, one single-family house with some accessory structures is located on the property. I've also included an aerial photo of the property, so you can see what it looks like from a bird's view. The properties that are located to the north, east, west, and south, so surrounding this parcel, are all zoned RS-10, Single Family Residential District is what RS-10 stands for, including the property. There is, just to the south, closer to the corner, is some property that's zoned RM-12, Multi-Family Residential District. This property was acquired as part of the Neighborhood Stabilization Program and was transferred to Greenhouse Ministries about a year and a half ago. The requested change is to rezone the property from its current RS-10 district for single-family use to RM-12, Multi-Family Residential District. And the request is to rezone its multifamily to allow the current structures, including the accessory structure, to house more than one family. I've also included some photos in your packets, and if you'll take a look at those, this is a photo that I took from Bradyville Pike, and it shows a single-family structure driveway. And this is the accessory structure that at one time was a single fam, or was a place where an additional residential dwelling unit, but I think since has been ceased being used as a residential dwelling unit. And there's a photo from the cul-de-sac of Carolyn Court of the back of that accessory structure. So, just so that you can orient yourself and see what you're looking at. The proposed zone, RM-12, would permit multi-family residential dwellings by right, so more than one family could live on this property. With the size of the property, they could have a maximum of nine dwelling units permitted. They wouldn't get the full 12 because it's less than one acre. So they could have up to nine units if this zoning were approved. There's some institutional uses also that are permitted as part of the RM-12 district, and I've listed them in your staff comments. Staff has a few concerns with this rezoning application, mainly that the detached accessory structure was apparently converted as an apartment without proper permits, and so we don't know to what extent it does or does not meet building code. So certainly, any plans to, we would require verification from the applicant that the structures conform. With codes and zonings will be required prior to any issuance of any permit and if you decide to approve this as a multi-family zone. The Planning Commission has scheduled a public hearing this evening to consider rezoning this property, this .8 acres from its RS-10 district to RM-12. You should go ahead and conduct the public hearing at this time. If you have any questions about this application, either before or after the public hearing, staff's available to answer them, and I believe that there's a representative of the applicant in the audience as well. He did inform me that he has a presentation, but if you do have any questions, I think he'll be ready to answer those. Do you have any questions for me at this time, before the public hearing?
Mr. Gilli.
Thank you, Chairman. I have some comments more than questions. I have been talking to some representatives of the applicant, as well as Mr. Adelot, today, and I think the overall what Greenhouse Ministries is wanting to do is basically to be able to allow two families to be there, and I think we could achieve the goal of what they're wanting, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Adelot, instead of the RM-12 by zoning it RD, which would allow the two units, is that correct?
Yes, sir. The RD classification would allow two dwelling units on one lot of record.
And that would, that would limit it to those two units and alleviate the concerns of a lot of members of the public who have contacted me about the long-term picture, if it's blanket zoned RM-12, of eventually there being more than two units. And this would achieve the goal, I think, of what Greenhouse Ministries is wanting to do, and would still fall in line with what I think the neighboring property owners would be willing to accommodate in their neighborhood, from what I've spoken. And I know we have to go through the public hearing process, but I wanted to go ahead and throw that out there, that I think that is something we could suggest, and we could actually go ahead and make that recommendation tonight without a deferral, because that's a more restrictive zoning than what was initially applied for. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, it is. In fact, I consulted with our Assistant City Attorney this afternoon on that issue to make certain that that was the case.
Yes, and I agree. If that is the Planning Commission recommendation, that would be appropriate.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Ely? Is there a representative for the applicant that'd like to make a statement?
My name is Cliff Sharp, and I am the Director at Greenhouse Ministries. After the sign went up and the letters went out, I got a couple of calls from people in the area. And so what we did, I don't know if y'all, everyone got a copy of the flyer that I took around, I've got several of them here. But I took these around to every house, I talked to all but three, and a lot of people thought that it's a possibility we're going to zone, rezone the whole area, and so I talked to them and tried to explain it. I think most of them felt more comfortable, but they were still concerned about the possibility putting a lot of, after we, if we were to do something later and sell the house, that other apartments. So, in talking to Mr. Gilli and to Mr. Adelot, I feel like that this would allow us to use the apartment that was never legally an apartment and have it set up where we would have for two single-family dwellings there. And so that is our request, and again, I think that probably the RD is much better fitted for the neighborhood, too. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions, I'll be glad to fill those.
Thank you, sir. I don't see any at this time, we might have some after the public hearing. Thanks very much. Does the Planning Commission have any other questions for the staff? Mr. Adelot, do you have anything?
Not right now, Mr. Lamb.
Okay. In that case, I'll, before I open the public hearing, let me briefly go over the rules that we conduct our public hearings by, in case you have not been to one before. We'll open the public hearing, you'll be invited to come forward to speak either for or against the proposal. If you come forward, please come to the microphone on the podium, please clearly state your name, give your address, and hold your comments to no more than three minutes. Make all your comments or questions to the Planning Commission, and if you have any questions, the staff will make note of them, and will attempt to get those answered at the conclusion of the public hearing. All that being said, I'll open the public hearing at this time and ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak.
Good evening, Commission. My name is Jimmy Tyson, I live at 2019 Carolyn Court, directly almost across from the dwelling that we're speaking of. I really don't have an oppose or an agreement with this, because I don't understand a lot of it from the R-12s and the RDs, I don't understand those figures, I have been told a little bit about them. My question is, and my concern is, what happens in the future? My wife and I have been there for 19 years, we're the longest resident there, and in being that, we want to know what happens when they move. If you're saying there're not going to be but two families, three families there, is that going to remain afterwards? Brother Cliff has had, Sharp has had people there for a while, we've had a little trouble out of some, but not really any. When the trouble came, it left, it was, they had no problem doing what they were supposed to do to it. I have no problem with that. I'm kind of the watcher of the neighborhood, I'm the preacher, so I do that. And I'll call Brother Sharp at any time, we've not had any problem with that part. We're just wondering, as a neighborhood, and a lot of our neighbors are here, plus the Wilsons, who are neighbors of ours, what's going to happen, just in case this doesn't work? Are there other, are they going to be able to come in and push this down, and then build other dwellings there, and we're going to be like down the street duplexes and houses in an area, crunched up? Are we going to be pushed out, our property value go down because of this? Right now, we don't really know what's going to go on afterwards. We know what's happening now, the two-family dwellings, I have no problem with that. I don't think my family does. But what happens afterwards? That's all mine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tyson. Who would like to be next?
My name is Tammy Allen, I live at 2003 Carolyn Court, and I live directly across from the property in question. I completely agree with Mr. Tyson. My only concern is if the ministry gets this rezoning and at some future date, they decide to move from that property, it would be all too easy for there to be multiple apartments put in that front yard of that property. It has the room, I agree. The increased traffic, the increased activity on our street is not acceptable. We've lived there about 16 years, it's always been a very quiet neighborhood, a place where we could let our children play outside. All the neighbors have watched out for each other's children and grandchildren, we want to see that continued. If it is rezoned for this D2, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, I would have no issue with that. I would have a very severe issue if it was rezoned for more than the two-family dwellings. I can't afford to have my property values go that far down, and as I said, the increased traffic, the increased activity would be a great sadness to this neighborhood. It's always been a very quiet, very comfortable area, and a very safe area. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen.
I'm Carolyn Wilson, my husband Floyd and I live on 2007 Bradyville Road, and we've been there, well, I grew up in this area, and Floyd and I have been there for 45 years in our, in the house we're in now. I just hate to see, I know the city has put in, or whoever has put in so much work to renovate this house, and it's so, such a beautiful place, it always has been. And my father and my grandfather and the man on farm built that house back in the late 30s, early, maybe 39 or 40. And I just, I don't understand why, you just get through building something like that and redoing it, and now, if you put in these apartments, they're going, they'll be right there in the front yard, and that's going to take away from, Carolyn Court's a nice little street, and I just hate to see something like this done. And I just hope that when you make your decision, you make it thinking, well, if this was my neighborhood, would I want it? I am for the Greenhouse Ministry, I think it's a great thing, but I'm just against this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
I'm so, like my wife, are against the situation.
Mr. Wilson, just for the record, would you state your name, sir?
Yes, sir, Floyd Wilson, Floyd M. Wilson, live at 2007 Bradyville Road.
Thank you, sir.
We've lived in that vicinity. After Carolyn and I got married, I went in the military, and after I got out, we decided we needed a place to live. We moved across the street from Carolyn Court, and then we started having more kids, so we moved, built a house across, we're next to Carolyn Court now. I just don't understand why all at once, the house out there has been completely redone. I know that, because I watched them do it. After they got it redone, now they want to do something else with it. And I know the people, Sprad has lived there for years, and they finally built that little shed of garage, decided there, that nobody needs to, and would you be taking, use that little building there, and then you get it set up where you can take and change all kinds of room out there. But like the other people talking, it's not acceptable, because if you get it zoned this way, you can tear a whole front out of that house, front end, trees and all, and build two or three families, you can build them up or down. And I think that'd be the wrong thing to do. Appreciate y'all hearing my wife and I talk about it, because we understand it, but we appreciate your concern.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Would anybody else care to speak? Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Adelot, could you handle some of the questions that the speakers had?
Perhaps the clearest question that I heard, and I think this does deserve some explanation, is what happens in the future, and what will happen if they move? Zoning runs with the land, once it is zoned, it would require an act of the City Council to change the zoning. It requires an act of the council to establish the zoning, it requires an act of the council to change it. So if this property is rezoned either to RM-12 or to RD, once it is zoned, that whatever, it will stay that way if they move out, somebody else buys the property, or somebody else moves in. The RM-12 classification will allow nine dwelling units on one lot of record, the size this property has. This property is about, just right at 36,000, 38,000 square foot, and according to the mathematics that I've used, if my block calculation is right, nine dwelling units would be about the most that could be done. They have to meet the required setbacks off both Carolyn Court and off of Bradyville Pike. They can be a three-story building, that's permissible, they can be townhouse dwellings. They could actually develop the property with separate lots. A lot in the RM-12 classification requires a minimum of 7,500 square foot, 7,500 square foot for one lot, and that one lot could have two dwelling units on it, according to our zoning. Now, there's been a little discussion about the RD classification, and that's, we introduced that early on. The RD classification requires it to be one, excuse me, let me start over, the RD classification requires one, excuse me, no more than two dwelling units on one lot of record. So this is one lot of record right now. It is possible it could be subdivided. The RD classification requires a minimum lot size of 8,000 square foot. So yes, it would be possible to resubdivide this property into multiple lots, probably maybe three lots, from what I look at, by doing, by taking my scale and realizing that there are two fronts, one off of Carolyn Court and one off of Bradyville Pike. But it leaves an odd-shaped building envelope when you do that. The lot, if there was to be another lot created in the front, it would probably have to be on up around, probably larger than 12,000 square foot, because of the two required setbacks in order to have a reasonable area. So really, the RD does not have a whole lot of potential for redevelopment. It would be expensive, they'd have to extend the sewer to the units and all that goes with it. But it is a possibility, and it'd be more flexibility if the house were removed. The likelihood of seeing a house like that removed is remote, from my experience, there's a lot of investment already there, so I discount that as something that someone would actively want to do. Now, if the house were to be damaged by, extensively by a fire, that might be, that might change the whole paradigm. It's my belief that it would be probably remote to see it redeveloped further if it was zoned RD.
So you're saying that it's a possibility that with an RD zoning, it could be divided into three separate lots of record?
That is a possibility, based upon the amount of land area they have. Practicalities discount though, that, so it's not a probability, although it is a possibility.
In the remote realm that that would happen, you said they would, the applicant or land owner would have to extend the sewer?
Yes.
That would be very expensive.
Well, it's incidental to pretty much all development, that you have to do something about sanitary waste. If you're in the county, you'd have a septic tank. Here, you'd have to extend the sewer, probably the sewer is already in Carolyn Court, so it would require tapping into that sewer and extending services over.
Explain to me, is, may I ask a question, Ms. Adelot? Here again, I want to make sure that Mr. Tyson, Ms. Allen, Mr. Wilson's concerns are addressed on the number of units. Go over the RD for me.
RD. RD zoning classification allows two dwelling units on one lot of record. This property has the possibility for multiple lots of record to be created upon it. It can be divided further, because it has more than eight, it has more than 16,000 square foot, has about 36,000 square foot. It has two street frontages. A lot on the corner has to be larger, because it has to account for two fronts for the structures, thereby requiring more lot area in order to have a building envelope that works. So it's my belief that this property could, it's probably not, does not have the capacity for more than three lots to be created upon it. Even with a blank slate, it would be difficult. Now, with the existing structure on the property, I don't believe it has much probability to be divided further. I just don't see that it just has the, what someone wanting to build another duplex on the property is going to look for.
Ms. Jones.
What are the possibilities with the existing structure and the existing zoning? Are there any type of variances they can get to use the accessory structure as a apartment? I mean, there are plenty of places around town that, you know, have these little apartments, people, you know, how do they do all that?
Okay.
On a single-family zone?
All right. We have what is sometimes called a mother-in-law's apartment. In an RS district, you may have one principal dwelling unit on one lot of record. An accessory dwelling unit is permissible upon approval by the Borders on Appeals. There will be limitations, it's going to be restricted for use by, from non-family members. Non-family members will not be permitted there. Sometimes you think of it as a place, sometimes you just have to take care of a family member. Sometimes it's a mother-in-law, sometimes it is an incompetent brother or sister that needs to be close to watch. And people find themselves in these circumstances, and we want to help people to be able to take care of a family when they got to. The Borders on Appeals will have a public hearing, and they will place conditions on it, if it's appropriate. One of the conditions sometimes is that after the owner no longer needs it, it reverts back to a single-family, it's no longer can be used as accessory dwelling. We have some scattered around our community that were established prior to those, to that, some of them date many years. Occasionally, people create them in the dark of night, and we find out about them later, and that sometimes it's a very awkward experience for, for some of the people involved, where we have to make them discontinue them, or legitimize them, because they were, they, sometimes they were built for the right reasons, they just didn't follow the proper codes and requirements. So if that wanted to be established here, as long as they were getting approval from the Borders on Appeals, and it were bona fide members of the immediate family residing in the principal unit, it's possible. I don't think that's consistent with what the Greenhouse Ministries want to do, so under the RS-10 classification, they wouldn't be able to do that, but they still have that right if it were a bona fide member. Now, that's not really a variance as much as it's a special use permit. The Borders on Appeals does not have the authority to grant a variance on the, on the density or the number of dwelling units on the property. That's a use variance, and that's not allowed under our law.
So the least dense, most restrictive zoning would be the RD? Is that, just to get multifamily?
Yes, ma'am, and I'll say it maybe in a slightly different way.
You can probably say it better.
To achieve their objective of having two dwelling units on the property, RD zoning classification will achieve that. And there is no more restrictive zoning classification, other than as a planned residential development.
Mr. Gilli.
Mr. Adelot, back to the questions that were asked. First of all, regardless of what the zoning is, it runs with the land, whether Greenhouse Ministries continues to own the property, or whether they sell it at the end of the period that they're under terms with, regardless, it runs with the land.
That is correct.
So if it gets rezoned RM-12, which is what the initial request was, obviously that runs with the land, if someone buys it down the road, wants to tear down the house and build an apartment, they could. That's the first answer to the question that was asked, and I don't think that's what any of the neighbors want to see happen, and nor is that what the objective of what Greenhouse Ministries is. That then brings us to the RD classification, with it being, and the, the way the plat of record is right now for this property, it's one lot, which means two dwelling units is the most they could have on it, short of resubdividing the property.
Under the RD, that is correct.
Okay. If they wish, or if a future owner wished to resubdivide, what is the process for that? Would that not require some level of scrutiny and approval to resubdivide a piece of property this small into multiple lots of record?
Yes, and I want to add something. The property has sufficient lot area to be resubdivided under the RS-10 classification right now.
So in other words, they actually, it's big enough, what is it, you say 38,000 square feet?
About 38.
So you could roughly get three single-family units, if you want to tear this house down, and you could cut this up and put three single-family residences, smaller houses on three lots of record, if you wanted to go that route, just as it's zoned right now?
Right. It's sufficient lot area to do that.
Okay. Now, if they, if an owner of a piece of property this size wished to resubdivide into multiple lots of record, what is the process for that?
A subdivision plan must come before the City's Planning Commission. They would be expected to do a preliminary plat, which should show how they're going to extend utilities that might be required, how they're going to do drainage and meet stormwater. Then they would follow that with a final plat. The final plat would be a document that'd be recorded, and it would be more of a survey, and it would become a deed reference when the transfer occurred.
But that, the approval of that, of any resubdividing of lots of record, it would be subject to review by this board?
Yes, sir.
So as it currently stands, if it is zoned RD, two lots of record unless they go through a completely additional process to seek resubdivision of the lot of record?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So as far as what runs with the land right now, if it's zoned RD, it's limited to basically use of the house and the mother-in-law apartment, as you refer to it, or if they don't want to use that into making two units out of the, out of the house, basically?
That's right.
Okay. And I think that helps the neighbors, does it with their concerns, and that would run with the land?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Gilli. Any other questions, comments? Mr. Hal Burton?
I've got one. Under the current zoning, how many unrelated family members could reside in that house? Any?
Okay. This gets into the definition of family. There's basically two definitions that come to play. Definition one, this is what we consider the traditional family, a husband, a wife, any number of their biological children or stepchildren, grandparents, an extended family. That's what we think of the, the traditional family. Our zoning also provides that no more than four unrelated individuals may reside together in a household as a family. So four unrelated individuals. We run into this lots of times around the university. Uh, we run into this lots of times around the university with college kids, and we see that happen quite a bit, but that's not the only place it happens. Uh, we see it, um, in, um, other parts of towns with, with adults. And that is possible here. It's possible in any of the houses on Carroll and Court, too, as a, as a family. That is the definition pretty much established in this state. There's a third definition, and it's, it has to do with mentally and physically handicapped individuals, and that number is eight, and in, in addition, there are caregivers, uh, who may, uh, not actually reside there. And that, that kind of blurs with a definition from the state as well.
So, uh, as a follow-up question, if four unrelated members by right can occupy this dwelling, how many people are, is Greenhouse trying to, or not trying, wanting to live in this house at one time? If it's more than four?
You ask a question, when you say wanting, that I'd have to defer to them.
Okay, well, he's up there willing to answer my.
Um, Mr. Sharp. Our goal is to have two young ladies in the house and one in the apartment. If, if we got the apartment, if we don't, then our plan right now, because it, it is very nicely set up to cover two ladies.
So, Mr. Ailot?
There's five bedrooms.
I, I'm lost here. If, if that's what they're trying to accomplish, are we not already there?
No, because we cannot use the apartment as a separate one because it was, it has never been legally an apartment. And so my first request was to have it grandfathered.
Right.
And because it was never legally an apartment, it could not be grandfathered. And so then the process, we had to, we had to go through a zoning process to be able to, uh, uh, use that, that apartment to, uh, to place another girl in it.
Okay, one more question, I'm sorry. Um, this, uh, other structure, Mr. Ailot, I guess is beyond the square footage of the quote-unquote, uh, what they could come to the BCA for a variance?
Now, you, you mean a variance as a, or do you mean a special use permit?
Excuse me, special use permit?
It's pretty good size. And yes, sir, I believe it is. Uh, it's, it's pretty good size. Also, I'm, I think that, you know, this begins to get a little bit of, to be hair splitting when we begin to say, well, all right, is that an accessory dwelling or not? We've got two unrelated individuals in the main household, and we've got a separate dwelling unit, they have no household privileges, they have no, they have nothing but just whatever, uh, chance encounters they meet between the principal house and the, and the other house. That's not, that's not anything accessory. That's really a separate dwelling unit, and that's what they want to be able to have. They want to be able to have the independence set up so that that property is used as a separate dwelling. And we're not already there. Now, let me add this. Where we are is, if they say, well, we want to have three unrelated individuals in the main house, there's five bedrooms, they're there. That's, that's not a problem. It comes back to the access, the accessory structure. And it comes back to also, how many children will one of these, uh, women have? They may begin to have three or four children, uh, two of them have three or four children, and then we begin to blur into, it begins to be, uh, you go awry of that second definition, of four unrelated individuals.
Mr. Ailot, one thing that bothers me, and I, I think from listening to the comments of the public, uh, the appearance of the house right now is, I think, very nice. It looks good. I think Greenhouse Ministries, uh, performs a valuable service in the community. My concern is with a residential duplex zoning, that five years down the road, ten years down the road, whatever, for whatever reason, uh, Greenhouse Ministries sells this property to somebody that wanted to come in, and it maybe, if it, if it won't fit, you know, three lots of record, it would easily fit two lots of record with this zone there, and then come in and, and site a duplex, remove the trees, put a duplex on the, uh, lot between the house and Bradyville Pike, have the duplexes, uh, driveways entering onto Carroll and Drive, and be perfectly legal without having to come back before the, uh, planning commission because it would be, uh, it would be a site plan approval deal rather than a, uh, zoning matter, because the zoning would already be in place. Uh, if they, if somebody was to do that subsequently down years from now, it would just change the whole character of that charming old house, removing the trees and, and having the house all of a sudden obstructed by another dwelling between Bradyville Pike and the house. And that's something that I personally am uncomfortable with, uh, if, if that was to happen. I think that would, that would not help the residents of Carroll and Court at all.
Ms. Lamb, if they, there's a provision of our zoning ordinance, if you have multiple main buildings and one lot of record, it is a site plan, they must come back before the planning commission. So it would come back before you, if there were multiple main buildings. Under RD, if they subdivide the property, it comes back. Uh, even, even if it comes back to you, it, it doesn't mean that, um, that all the, well, let me, let me start over. Even, um, if it comes back to you, you are bound to approve it if it meets the development requirements. So if it meet parking and setbacks, height, uh, orientation, those are the things, you're bound to approve it. You can't just deny it because it's a pretty old house and you don't want to see that happen.
Yeah.
Uh, that could happen today under the RS 10. They could subdivide the property and put.
But you have a single-family dwellings rather than duplexes, which is, which is commensurate with what's in the neighborhood already.
Yes, sir.
That's my problem with the RD. Mr. Jones?
And if, if we were to do the RD, and then you, and you're allowing them to use the accessory structure, is it possible for them to have four unrelated family members in the main house and four unrelated family members in the accessory structure?
Yes, ma'am.
A planned residential district, is there any way a planned residential district here would eliminate my fears of future subdivision in this regard, as far as putting duplexes down there in the front yard?
Yes, sir, it could. It'd require development of a plan, and it'd require, uh, going through the zoning process to zone it to that specific plan. I will tell you that I have, um, I, uh, this may be a situation where it may be best for that sort of thing, but in general, I try to avoid having a, um, planned development approach for one lot or one small lot.
Sure.
If I can avoid it. I prefer to see the traditional zoning take place. Uh, I think that we've run into situations sort of like the property over there off of Medical Center Parkway where the, uh, where the frame shop was, it became the antique shop, it became the dent masters, and then it became, um, the, uh, Doggy Daycare. And, uh, all of them have been good uses, but, um, it, it was a very burdensome approach where we finally rezoned it to the, um, to the commercial fringe, and they, they seem to be a whole lot better off. Um, but, uh, planned development approach is, uh, is very, very restrictive. I mentioned that earlier, that it would be the most restrictive approach because it would require adherence to a specific plan. It takes that all flexibility, and it requires investment on the front end. But again, I've not actively encouraged that as the approach here, but, uh, it's a possibility.
Well, it's a rather unique situation here in this case, handling something that we're trying to be fair to the neighborhood and fair to the property owner as well. And I'm not, I think Greenhouse Ministries is perfectly, uh, honorable in their intentions on what will happen on the property. I'm just concerned down the road what might happen, and listening to some of the comments from the neighbors, seems to be, uh, they have those same comments, same concerns as well. Mr. Clark?
I wanted you to explain to the neighborhood what planned development would entail.
A planned development is a little bit different zoning approach from RS 10 or RD. It's a, more of a performance-based type of zoning. It's authorized under Section thirteen of our zoning ordinance. With the planned development approach, the applicant is required to develop a, um, plan for how he will use the property, how he will arrange these structures that are going to be constructed, how the, uh, how many families would reside on the property, and that, that sort of thing. Maybe a maximum number of people in this case. Uh, with that plan, he becomes zoned for that plan, and any deviation from it would require a permission from the city, and it may require an amendment to the plan. Uh, and most likely it would. Uh, it could state a maximum number of lots on the property, and, um, any subdivision may require or would require, coming back to the planning commission. The problem with a planned development is it requires investment on the front end that can sometimes be costly. Um, the planned development approach seems to work best for large developments with applicants who know what they want to do. Uh, the best, the poster child, uh, example of a planned development is State Farm Insurance, large regional headquarters, they were, knew exactly what they wanted to do when they bought the land, and, um, they've, uh, pretty much done it. They are a, um, um, best suited for that because the investment is, is very small compared to the reward for them. Uh, I don't know exactly what they spent on their, their, um, property out there, but the amount that they invested in their plan was very small compared to it. With a small property, particularly one like this, the investment of a plan may be, um, several hundreds of dollars, and comparing that to the benefits on the back end, uh, may be a much greater percentage.
But if we decide to go with RD, does that not give the neighbors some type of protection if Green Ministries decide to sell that property?
I believe it does. It's pretty much put a maximum type N density on it, and, and really, to be, to be very frank with the planning commission and, and, um, the public, although I respect the, the conditions of Carroll and Court, it's a short little cul-de-sac, um, six more units is not going to be, um, a large number of, of houses on this street. There, there is, there's certainly capacity there. Um, especially with one of them likely to have driveways off of Bradyville Pike anyway.
Any other questions or comments from the planning commission?
Mr. Ailot, if, you just, in your last statement, you, the question was, is an RD going to change the neighborhood, uh, much, if any, as it is now? That's a question.
The change would be a very small change, in my belief. The number of new households, the amount of, um, service delivery, it's, it's well within the capacity of that street to handle it.
And, refresh my memory, they're already basically doing this now with, with, uh, one house and then the accessory structure that's not in compliance with the codes and nothing.
To my knowledge, they are not using the accessory structure as a dwelling unit, and it was inspected today by our codes department, and they did not see any signs of occupancy today. Now, what's going on in the main house, I'm not, I'm not sure. I am confident that there's no more than one family right now in the, in the main house.
Now, the clincher question is, to me, is, would the RD pose a threat today, tomorrow, in the future to the existing homeowners on Carroll and Court?
I don't believe so.
The only way that changes under RD is if they move to resubdivide into additional lots of record. As it currently stands, it's a one lot of record, the most it can be there are two residential units, the way the land is currently configured, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But you also said that if they come to, uh, if someone, uh, a late or owner, a subsequent owner comes before the planning commission, uh, that, and they meet the requirements, there's, there's no justification to deny the request of that rezoning?
Not rezoning, re-subdiving.
Resubdiving, thank you, yeah.
That is correct. And certainly, if they don't meet it, you are obligated to deny it.
If there's no other questions or comments, we're ready for a motion. Wait, we're not ready.
I thought, whatever, councilman was going to do it, but I, if you're not, I, I'm going to, uh, make a motion, I feel like we're probably going to have a, might have to have a hand raising vote here, uh, but I, I'm going to make a motion to deny the request.
A second motion.
Motion is made to deny. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
All right, well, wait a second. Let, let's make sure we understood what we were voting on. Or, or I, I know you all understood what you were voting on, but let me make sure I know what I was counting votes on. You're voting to deny the RM twelve request.
That's all that's on the table. That's all that's on the table right now.
All right, okay.
Okay. Let's, uh, have a showing of hands just for clarity on that.
If we're voting to simply deny the RM twelve, I think that I, I will change, I am in agreement to denying the RM, the RM twelve.
That was the motion.
Okay.
Okay. In a second, I'm going to ask for a showing of hands for everybody that is voting for the motion to deny. If you're unanimous, vote. The motion passes.
Then does that leave us open then to submit a second motion to, uh, propose to rezoned RD?
Yes, sir, it does.
Okay. With that, I would move that we recommend rezoning the property RD.
Motion is made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No.
No.
Okay, all in favor of the motion to rezon to RD, raise your hand, please. One, two, three. All opposed, raise your hand. Motion fails. Okay. The, um, Mr. Ailot, for the record, the, uh, applicant has what rights from here?
All right, the applicant has, uh, some options. One is to let the matter die and use his property as it's currently zoned, it's zoned to RS 10. His second option is to write me a letter and ask for it to be, um, forwarded to the city council with the, um, recommendation, uh, from the planning commission to deny the request to rezon the property to RM twelve and to deny the property to be zoned to RD.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that and make that part of the public comment.
If you write me the letter, I will take it on to the council under ordinary business, otherwise I will take no action.
Okay. Thank you very much. Well, thank everybody that came tonight that spoke in the public hearing. We'll move on to the next public hearing. That's a proposed amendments to the city's signed ordinance, Chapter twenty-five and a quarter, signs, Section twenty-five and a quarter through twenty-four, twenty-five and a quarter through twenty-five, twenty-five and a quarter through twenty-six, to correct references, building, uh, codes department as the applicant. Mr. Whitaker, good evening, sir.
Evening, Chairman, members of the planning commission. In November of last year, uh, the building code staff, along with the planning staff and legal department, proposed some significant changes to our sign ordinance. Uh, in that package, we increased the planned development signage, uh, changed the development interest sign, actually increased those, changed our, um, permit application, uh, so we, there's a lot of changes that were proposed, uh, and, uh, again, I want to emphasize that they were increases primarily, uh, in signage allowed, allowed. The, uh, what's, the biggest part of what's in front of you tonight, we went through that ordinance, we had to delete some areas, add areas, and move things around, uh, throughout that ordinance. Some of our numbering sequences got off, uh, primarily what this is, is to go get those number sequence back in order, uh, if you will, uh, because during the, throughout the ordinance, it references sections, and those reference sections need to be correct. Uh, one section that is not just a basically renumbering would be on the temporary signs. Uh, our full intentions when that sign package came through or changes came through, the planning commission and council, was to make the temporary signage throughout the city consistent. Uh, at the time, you could only have one temporary sign in GDO, uh, you could have three, uh, per lot. three, uh, per lot in other areas. We did pick that up. The one thing that we didn't pick up was the directional signs, temporary directional signs. We had full intentions of actually changing that so it is consistent throughout the city. Uh, that is one change in this package that is not just numbering. It would pick up the directional sign changes and keep that consistent throughout the city. I'll be happy to answer any questions. This is set for public hearing for the council on the tenth. Uh, if the, uh, planning commission considers this, approves it, we'd ask that you would, uh, recommend this to the council. And again, I'm, uh, available for questions before or after the public hearing.
Any questions from Mr. Whitaker? We've already discussed it, this at our afternoon meeting, so I think we pretty well know what you're trying to accomplish here, Mr. Whitaker. Uh, if there's no questions from Mr. Whitaker, I'll open the public hearing at this time, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Okay, so, I'll close the public hearing. If there are no questions or comments from members of the planning commission, we're ready for a motion.
Chairman Lamb, I recommend approval.
Seconded.
Yeah. Motion is made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. That concludes the public hearing. A portion of our agenda, move on to gateway design overlay. We have one item under that today. That is the McCabe Office Building, initial design review for seventeen thousand and sixteen square feet on three point one eight eight acres, zone heavy industrial in GDO four, located along Medical Center Parkway. Dr. Craig McCabe, this is the developer. Ms. Logan, good evening.
Good evening, thank you, Chairman Lamb and members of the planning commission. The first item before you tonight, um, under gateway design overlay is the initial design review for Dr. McCabe, Eye Vision Center, to be located on Medical Center Parkway. If we could go to the computer screen, this will be located on the, um, lot where you see the appendage that comes off of Medical Center, that's already paved, and a lot of, that's the back way into the Burger King development, as well as the strip center that, um, Jewel Hale and Bobby Kirby built that front along Memorial Boulevard. This property will actually front towards Medical Center Parkway, and the property is split. It's, um, not completely zoned within the GDO four, but about half of the property has GDO four overlay, and because of that, the property has to comply with the GDO regulations. Um, it's, it's off the screen that just directly to the west of that vacant land is the Boys and Girls Club. So, um, just to try to familiarize the people at home, um, with where we're located at. Um, the applicant has proposed a, um, this is just the black and white elevations, and you all have some color renderings, and when we come back for final design review, we'll have color renderings that we can hit up on the video screen, um, for the people at home. But it's an all-brick building with metal accents. Um, if we could come back to me, I'll show the people at home the proposed materials. The, um, applicant is proposing to use a cast stone based building with, um, a, um, three types of brick, um, with the darker brick, of course, being the bottom band, with the middle being the body and the light color being the top. Um, the applicant is also proposing two types of metal for accent along the front of the building. As you'll see, where it comes in, the canopy that comes into the building, and the curvature of the roof is, um, is proposed to be a metal accent. They're using two different colors of metal. We met extensively on this. Originally, they were going to use, I think, just the old lighter color silver, um, but staff really liked the pewter color, so they compromised and are using both the colors on the building, um, because we really like that pewter color. It's dark, and we really feel like it, it's really, really speaks to what we're trying to accomplish in that area. And they, um, you selected a brick that has iron spotting in it that will actually tie in with that pewter color. So I'll bring that to you. Um, I don't really love the middle color brick, but we're going to work on that.
[laughing]
So that's the overall design and proposal for the building. Um, it's a one-story building, and again, it's going to be not only a vision center, but a surgery center as well. The, um, site plan is in fairly good shape. We've worked really, um, diligently with the engineer on this site plan because it does have a little bit of a challenge just because of how you approach it from Medical Center, um, because that drive was already constructed. So what they're proposing on doing, and if we want to go to the screen, hopefully it'll show up for the people at home, but what they're proposing on doing is bringing in, um, kind of a roundabout feature, but it really won't operate as a roundabout. It will so that you can come in underneath the canopy, but it'll have a stamped, um, asphalt or concrete, as well as with a ribbon curb, so it kind of gives a visual for what the applicant wants to do, but it has enough area there to function appropriately for fire department apparatus or emergency vehicles, which was something that staff was really concerned about. We didn't want a situation where every time a fire truck had to get through there, that they were running up over curves or anything of that nature. So that's kind of the design that we've worked through. Um, and so, um, this, the engineering staff, um, and planning staff feel comfortable with the design. We still want, um, confirmation of that from the fire department, and we're awaiting that now. Again, we, it, it's, it's all concrete. It's visually different with the ribbon curving and the stamped concrete, but it will still be able to support and, you know, will act as a travel area if needed for fire department. And you've been provided at front with, um, fire, with a fire truck turning template to show you that, so you know that we, we've looked at how it's going to function and operate from the front. Um, the landscaping plan has been, um, reviewed once already with the, um, landscape architect. We're having to work a little bit again within the confines of the property as it exists. It's a little bit difficult to get the required planting yards in because of the fact that the majority of the front area is roadway that, or drive that's already existing. So they're alternating on either side of that road, trying to get the requirements through. So the numbers will be met, just the locations are going to be a little bit different than what you normally see, and we would just ask that that be final before they come back to you for final design review on the plans as they propose. Um, we would want to make sure that before final design review, we have all of the final elements designed for the formal open space area, terms of benches and seating, et cetera, for outdoor areas, to make sure that we've accomplished that. Um, the striping, we've asked that they stripe, um, the, uh, a three-lane access roadway onto Medical Center and Memorial, and they've agreed to do that, and the engineer is showing it in their plans. We're happy with the striping plan as they've submitted it. For initial design review, this is what we have for you tonight. We feel like it's in pretty good shape at this point, but I'll be glad to answer any questions for you and the engineer and owner here tonight as well, if you have questions for them.
Mr. Young.
So is this going to be, uh, is it going to have an address of Medical Center Parkway?
Yes, ma'am. It will have a Medical Center Parkway address because the property fronts on Medical Center.
It does?
Yes, that, that drive appendage is part of the property. It's a private drive and it's, so it's part of that.
Oh, it's a private?
Mm-hmm. Yes, ma'am. And they, they actually situated and sited this, this building to front Medical Center and to have that Medical Center address.
Okay.
Now, one thing that I would ask you tonight, if you approve this on initial design review, is that you approve, um, or that you recommend in favor of a variance request. This will have to go before the board of zoning appeals for a variance because GDO has a maximum setback of ten feet greater than the minimum setback. Because of this being a flag type lot, I mean, it's got that large appendage, they can't meet that setback, so therefore it will have to go to BZA. We feel that the shape of the lot, of course, uh, you know, and the irregularity of the lot, uh, you know, would maybe be, you know, in support of a variance. But of course, usually whenever we have a variance situation in the GDO, we always like for the planning commission to review that as part of their initial design review and give a favorable or non-favorable recommendation to the BZA, however you choose, however you see fit. That's the only variance that we've identified for you at this time.
The lot just to the east of the access drive is a detention basin, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
Yes, of course.
And it cannot be constructed upon.
Right, yeah. Where was it from?
Was it, if, one of these says a two-story office building, one of them says a one-story office building, but I, I take it it's just going to be a one-story office building?
Yes, ma'am. Originally, it had been a two-story, and they had actually shown an apartment on the one side, which was going to kind of make it, uh, pretty interesting architecture, I thought, um, just from standpoint of it wasn't necessarily so symmetrical, but due to cost implications, they've taken off that second story since we originally reviewed it.
Any other questions or comments? This is the initial design review, so we'll see it again.
Yes, sir.
If there's no else, we're ready for a motion.
If you have anything on, you know, anything major you want to change or anything.
It's a very nice looking building.
Looks great.
Except for that middle brick, of course.
That's right. [laughing] Jim and I are going to work on it like I do.
Mr. Young.
I, Mr. Chairman, I move for further subject staff comments.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
We'll move on to Platts and Plans tonight, but we have six items under Platts and Plans.
Do we need a separate motion for approval or recommendation of approval of the variance?
Concerning the...
Or is that included?
With approval, to including that motion with approval by the BZA for a variance.
Okay, he did include staff comments, which was...
Right, all right, very good. Thank you.
Well, you got it both.
Thank you for the point of order, counselor. Okay. Move on to the Platts and Plans. We have six items under Platts and Plans tonight, the first of which is Puckett Station, section two, phase one B, a revised preliminary plat for seven lots on one point six nine acres, zone PRD, located along Cortez Drive. Puckett Station Partnership is the developer. Ms. Logan.
Yes, sir, thank you. If we could go to the screen, just so I could get everybody oriented at home, this is just an aerial photograph of where we're looking at tonight. As you can see, it's already been left in, this preliminary plat. Um, this is a continuation of the Puckett Creek subdivision, which has been a successful subdivision in this economic downturn, um, for us, for the city of Murfreesboro, and they are trying to modify their plat and their cul-de-sacs to, because of the houses that they've been building in this area, they're dictating a little bit deeper lots. They've had a couple, um, issues come up in, uh, the other sections, and so what they're doing is just redoing the design of the cul-de-sac and dropping it down. It's just a, it's just a modification to build, um, to put in seven lots, and it just requires a design change in the lots. They want, they need a little bit deeper lot than what they had originally had, try to accommodate the housing styles that they've selected. Um, this preliminary plat is in good order.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no questions, I make a motion to approve subject to all staff comments.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item under Platts and Plans is Puckett Station, section two, phase one B, a final plat for seven lots on one point six nine acres, zone PRD, located along Cortez Drive. Puckett Station Partnership is the developer.
Uh, yes, sir, thank you. This is the final plat for the preliminary plat that you just approved with the change in the cul-de-sac design, and again, this final plat is also in good order.
If there's no questions, we're ready for a motion.
I'll move. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item is Armstrong Valley Road subdivision, preliminary plat for two lots on ten point zero two acres, zone RS fifteen, located along Armstrong Valley Road. Danny Travis is the developer.
Yes, sir, thank you. This is a preliminary plat for two lots, for ten point oh two acres, zone RS fifteen, located along Armstrong Valley Road. And if you'll recall, this used to be the home of a planned residential development that was going to house a fifty-five-plus-year-age development-type concept, and that did not come to fruition. And so now, the applicants are in a situation where they need to be able to sell the lots, and they would like to sell it in large lot, in large tracts, um, and they do have people interested at this time, um, in trying to purchase those. Um, we, because of the contin-, um, extension of some utilities and making sure that the lots can serve that, um, we required them under state law to submit preliminary and final plats for that. So you have a master plan and preliminary plat that are together, because the master plan is a requirement of the preliminary plat now under our subdivision regulations. Overall, we're pretty comfortable with the preliminary plat that they submitted. We do have a couple corrections that will need to be made. Um, they'll need to show their, their twenty-foot public drainage management across the lots, and that's where those driveway culverts have been sized. We wanted those culverts actually sized, because there's quite a bit of water that's going to run through there. We actually feel like that will eventually be moving public waters, um, and so we want to make sure that that gets put in a public utility and drainage management so that the city can get in and maintain it if we need to. So that's for the protection of the future property owners. Um, and also, the MPEs and MFEs, the minimum pad elevations and the minimum floor elevations for lots, um, for the two lots seem reversed. We think he just got the numbers reversed, so we just need that to be corrected. Um, also, um, there was a couple of, um, just little notes that needed to be corrected on the plan, um, that just, it's just some semantics that staff wants to work with the surveyor on correcting. Other than that, we feel like the preliminary plat is in good order. I'll be glad to answer any questions you have.
Any questions? We're ready for a motion.
Chairman Lamb, I'll make a motion we approve subject to all staff comments.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the same property, Armstrong Valley Road subdivision, final plat for two lots on ten point zero two acres, zone RS fifteen, located along Armstrong Valley Road. Danny Travis, once again, is the developer.
Yes, sir, thank you. This final plat, um, is for two lots. They've got a buyer interested at this time, trying to buy these two lots, um, for the preliminary plat that you just reviewed. Um, again, overall, the final plat is in, um, good order. However, we do need to make sure we get those public utility and drainage management, that twenty-foot public utility and drainage designated across the, um, or just public drainage management, excuse me, across the lots where the driveway culverts are going to be. Again, we want them to make sure that they've got the correct MPE and MFE for the lots. We think they're reversed. Um, and also, that the note, they have a note on here about contacting the city engineer prior to construction, and that just needs to be modified, that it actually be, that they submit a lot-specific site plan for approval of the city engineer prior to receiving a building permit. The reason that we're doing that in, in this case, just so you know, is that this is a sensitive area in terms of drainage, and in terms of, um, siding the house because of the location of the septic, making sure that, uh, we have actual gravity flow through that septic area, and that's why we want to make sure that we have an opportunity to review a site plan before a house is constructed. It's just a note that needs to be put on the plat. If they're not planning on constructing a house at this point and just want the land, then that's not going to be an issue. It doesn't become an issue until they're ready to actually receive building permits. Um, in addition, the surveyor has omitted several certificates, um, that are required for recording. He doesn't have the certificate of approval that Mr. Adelot has to sign, or the certificate of approval for, uh, drainage that the city engineer has to sign, um, as well as the certificates required for septic disposal fields or for, uh, water, which is required. So those certificates need to be added to the plat, as well as he has a couple typographical errors to fix. Other than that, we feel it's in good order, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Young, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for approval subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? He carries. Item E is the Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Repurified Water Tank, site plan for a water tank located on property zone heavy industrial, located along Walter Hale Court, city of Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Department is the applicant. Ms. Logan.
Yes, sir, thank you. This is a site plan for a new water tower to be located off Walter Hale Court. If we could go to the screen, you can see Walter Hale Court comes right off of Medical Center Parkway. In fact, as you cross the bridge over Medical Center and you look down to the right, you can kind of see the area where we're talking about. So, um, it, I kind of want you to, to know that because, because of the fact the property does sit down, even though the height of this tower is going to be substantial, and the height variance was approved by the board of zoning appeals for it, you're already starting at a lower elevation, which will help mitigate that a little bit as you move through. It won't, I mean, you're still going to see it, but it won't be as tall because of the fact that it sits much lower down than Medical Center Parkway. And this is a necessity, as we have found, as we're moving through, the city of Murfreesboro is really expanding and trying to utilize as much as we can our repurified water. Um, of course, it's being used widely throughout our gateway, and we, of course, hope that in the future it'll be used throughout other areas of our city. Um, repurified water is, is of a great benefit to both the city, it's, um, in terms of environmental qualities, as well as to developers in terms of cost, because you can, um, it costs pennies on the dollar compared to potable water. And, uh, just, just so we know, I think, and I may be wrong on this, but I think that it's, that it's up to the nineteen seventy-two Clean Act standards for water, so it's not all that. So, we used to be okay with it, so, but anyways, um, so this is something that is needed. So this is something that is needed, and the site is way down the drive access, and it's a little bit hard to tell on this, but I've put some site plans at your thing, but if we could go to the screen, it may at least allow the people at home to see a little bit about what, where it's going to be located. But it's way down, I mean, you can see as it comes down Walter Hale Court, how far into the site it really is. I mean, it's way off of Medical Center Parkway. I mean, it's, it's down into the tree rows, so it's definitely not going to be obtrusive by any measures. And there's a little bit better example to show you right in the area of where it's going to go. It was reviewed with, by our airport manager as well, to make sure we didn't have any problems with FAA, and then here's kind of what the proposal is for what it will look like. So that's the design of it. It will look very similar to the water tank that is at our treatment plant already, our wastewater treatment plant. So I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have.
What would go paint on the side of it?
Nothing.
Which angle?
Stone.
Did you say red? It's flashing.
I'm impressed with you.
Any other questions?
That's funny.
Now, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion subject to all staff comments for approval.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. The final item under Platts and Plans is the Dollar General Store, site plan for nine thousand three hundred and sixty square feet on one point three eight acres, zone services under the Rutherford County zoning, located at the intersection of Epsom Road and Capital Way. Monty Turner is the developer. Ms. Logan.
Yes, sir. Thank you. This last item before you tonight is a site plan for a Dollar General Store located at the intersection of Epsom Road and Capital Way extension. And let me just kind of give, give you a little bit of history on this, if, if you don't mind, real quick. This is the aerial photo, and right there, where, just west of where the gas station is, and you can kind of see a rock pile there where Epsom and Capital Way meet, is where the site is located, where the proposal is. And the applicants came before you back in January and had this site approved for a, outside-the-city sewer customer. As you know, sewer is available in this area, however, this does not continue as to city limits for the city of Murfreesboro, and in fact, is outside of our current urban growth boundary. Therefore, the city planning commission made a recommendation, and the city council agreed to service this as an outside-the-city sewer customer, and this property was approved for that, which is why it's coming before you tonight, because as part of an outside-the-city sewer customer, they have to comply with and meet city of Murfreesboro development standards. During that approval, you adopted a similar classification for development review of commercial highway. The property is actually zone services in Rutherford County, but that was the closest that we had in terms of how to look at it from a review standpoint. The site plan, the site that they proposed is, the architecture that they proposed for this building is three sides brick, one with the rear being metal, and the architecture is definitely a basic architecture compared to what we've, what we've normally seen, however, is definitely improvement from what they've done in some of their other areas. They're showing brick insets, and they're going to do that in a different color. We're going to work with them on that, as well as add a canopy over the front door to try to bring a little more dimensionality to that area. The sides, they've shown all brick insets. We'll work with them on the colors, if you allow us to, staff to work with them on the colors, and some of the details there along the sides. They have asked to, they would work that out with staff if you would allow them to keep the metal on the rear. Because of the way this site's situated, and you're coming in from the side, and we're asking for an extension of Capital Way, we're not so concerned about that metal along the rear, because it's the one elevation, as well as the fact that there is a tight, I think in Rutherford County, it's maybe thirty-foot buffer. I think it's probably between a, around a D and an R zoning ordinance. We require C, but it's heavier than what RC is, because Rutherford County requires a heavier buffer. So they've had to meet both our requirements and Rutherford County requirements on landscaping at the rear, and because of that, I think that we're not as concerned about that metal along the rear, because of what they're having to do from a landscaping perspective, as well as the fact that there are other buildings out there that are brick-metal combination in this same vicinity. But we would rather focus on the front and the sides that are visible from the public rideways and make those as nice as we possibly can. Staff did ask them to look at the roof element, and because of the cost, they're, they can't really do a lot with that roof, but we're hoping that if we put some canopy on the building and look at some solder coursing and some brick insets, that we can give it some dimensionality on the, on the building. In terms of the site itself, when it went to Rutherford County, they had asked for turn lane there off Epsom Road, and staff, the city staff has worked closely with trying to figure out how to best accommodate this site from a traffic standpoint. We would recommend that they actually extend Capital Way and bring in, and bring the access for the site in through Capital Way, and that's what they have shown, an extension of Capital Way, which we've seen a preliminary plat for, that where that Capital Way would extend further down into and serve the rest of that property, because there's quite a bit of property, if you'll recall, that is left to be serviced in this area. And that's what they've shown, so it's caused them to flip their building and redo their site. And if you all approve this site plan, then it'll have to go back to Rutherford County for their approval because of the modifications to the access, but we feel this is a good way to access it, because eventually, that will probably be a four-lane, a four-lane roadway through there with an end, a designated left, a through, and a designated right out. And that will probably, more than likely, one day, you know, not now, but one day, we're setting it up for future signalization. So that's, that's what we're trying to think about, how to best address the traffic that could be in this area, not only today, but fifteen years from now, as this interchange area grows. The, the stormwater is, needs some modifications to meet our standards, but we don't consider that the modifications are fatal flaws to the site. We feel like they're just minor modifications to meet our requirements, but that it wouldn't require any major site changes or site plans. In terms of the actual width of the road, the access drives, if you'll notice on the site, they're showing thirty-six-foot wide access drives. Our normal is twenty-two. We sometimes see twenty-four to twenty-six. They like to have that thirty-six feet for truck circulation and maneuvering, and our engineers have looked at it and are not opposed to them keeping that thirty-six foot. We, at first, we had a lot of concern about would that lead to abuse, but the more that we looked at it, the more we're not concerned with that wide of an access aisle. They've shown a dumpster enclosure to be a wood fence with landscaping on three sides, and we still need some modifications to the striping on Epsom Road, and we would like our city traffic engineer to work with their traffic engineer on that item. The landscaping plan is pretty full. They've shown foundation plannings. Again, they've shown their buffers as required and their tree heights as required by the city of Murfreesboro. It will require final design review by our city horticulturalists, but myself and their landscape architect and the city horticulturists met on the landscape plan earlier this week, and so we feel like we're off to a good start with where we need to be on the, on the final landscape plan. I hope that addresses everything for you. I noticed a lot of information, but I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have about the site plan.
Ms. Jones. Ms. Jones.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to ask Mr. Lamb's question for him, since he didn't ask it. Is there going to be striping on this thirty-six-foot wide?
No. It won't be striped. It will just be extra-wide pavement, and it, and that's the way that they operate with their trucks, it allows them some extra maneuvering ability for their trucks. We don't want it striped in terms of, it start, it might start to confuse the drivers. It's just extra-wide space, but we...
I mean, like the arrows, you know, so you're not going to get the people getting ready to turn left out of the site when they're leaving, that are going to be too far over to let a truck turn in?
Are you talking about striping at the access drives, or are you talking about striping down the aisles behind the parking spaces?
No, the access drive.
Oh, the access drives. We can look at that. Yeah, sure, we can get that. Oh, yeah, no problem.
What did I say? No telling.
You said access drive.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, no, we can do that.
I, I just, you know, that is so wide. I mean, there's no telling where they're going to land when they go to pull in and out.
We can do that, to facilitate traffic in and out, no problem.
I'm so proud you asked that question.
I know. Couldn't believe it, you didn't ask. I was waiting for you to ask it, but...
Yeah, I've trained you well.
It's late.
For us.
Any, any other questions? If not, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion for approval subject to all staff comments.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
That concludes for Platts and Plans portion of our agenda. Mr. Adalot, staff reports and other business.
I have none.
It's a, it's a historical evening, then.
[laughing]